Good morning and welcome to the 2nd July meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It's a regular meeting. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to this regular meeting. It is a meeting, it is not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call upon any interested attendee who may have questions that are pertinent to the items that are on the Board's agenda today. There are copies of the meeting's agendas on the table when you come in, as well as two sets of materials on the matters that we will be taking up for discussion in action. Before we begin today, I'd like to just have the Board extend its condolences to our Town Purchasing Director, Director of Administrative Services, Joan Sullivan. Joan's mom passed away on July 28th at the age of 89 years old, and at this time, I would request we observe a moment of silence for Joan's family as she mourns the loss of her mother, Lorraine Horson Tibbetts. Item number two on the agenda is a poll of minutes, pardon me, from the July 17th meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to those minutes? If there are no correction or changes, is there a motion to approve these minutes as presented?
So, seconded.
Okay, without objection. Item number three, first selectman updates. We had several events since our last meeting, of course. We kicked off our last meeting on July 17th with a wonderful presentation by the Greenwich 375th Committee and all the various docents who led the tours of the neighborhoods. That culminated on actual Founder's Day, July 18th, out at Greenwich Point in his Arden Cottage, and a celebration of the initial transfer of land from the Monacoego Indians to Elizabeth Veek, Elizabeth's neck, and really was the accentuating point of this wonderful celebration is to highlight the history. So, we were there. Sue Baker and Chris Franco led the final tour for residents of Old Greenwich. Excuse me, Chris. Totally inappropriate. Please. Totally inappropriate, though. I'm sorry, but everybody enjoys you, but not when you're gonna disrupt a meeting like that.
I'm sorry, I was here to proceed to block grant, and I have an appointment conflict, and I'm just seeing if you'd be after 11:00, that's all.
Okay. Pardon us, as I was saying, a very joyous occasion for the town for all those who participated. I want to again say thank you. I know our Board was there in full force. To Mr. Toner's credit, he took the wonderful tour on the school bus. Mr. Marzullo and I were less resilient that day.
But challenge.
It was wonderful, it was a full house. On July 22nd, I had a meeting with our former town planner, Diane Fox, who is now heading up an organization under the auspices of the Greenwich Historical Society called the Greenwich Preservation Network. This is a consortium of individuals who have a keen interest and desire for preservation of all things historic within our community. What the group has been working on since its first meeting is a standardization of signs, signage, for all the various historic districts, both national and local within the town of Greenwich. She is working with local architect Chuck Hilton to come up with the appropriate design, as well as the requisite summary of those districts' history, and the goal is to begin the placement of those signs, ideally the first one in the Greenwich Central Business District Historic Area in September. So, we certainly want to applaud that group for coming together and helping to accentuate Greenwich's history and preservation of historic structures and neighborhoods. On July 24th, there was a meeting of the ADP Steering Committee. For those who are new to this or not aware what this is, essentially, the town implemented a new human resource information system. There's been a full acclamation to it, and this group is comprised of members of the Board of Education, Schools Administration in town, who are looking at the remaining issues that exist. We're slowly winding down this Steering Committee's work. Future events, July 30th, at Eastern, at the Town Hall Meeting Room, actually right here, the Eastern Greenwich Neighborhood Plan Second Draft is going to be presented and discussed. I would encourage all those who have an interest in the future planning of our neighborhoods, and particularly Eastern Greenwich, this is highlighting that area. This is a series of plans to come and attend this meeting tonight. On Monday, August 3rd, we will be having a press conference here to have a demonstration of what we're referring to as Access Greenwich. It's a web portal as part of what we refer to as 3-1-1, but it is truly not what is defined as 3-1-1, as Melissa Jones, our Senior Management Analyst, has explained. But please come on Monday here at 11:00 a.m. to see a launch of this application, which should make it a little bit more easier for individuals to convey concerns, comments to the town. It is being piloted initially within the Department of Parks and Recreation. Finally, we have received notification from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, a public notice dated July 24th regarding the maintenance dredge of the Mayanus River Federal Navigation Project. As was noted in the release, this is something that's been discussed and worked on over a course of at least eight years, probably even before that. We are pleased that the state has funded through two separate bond authorizations the monies that are necessary to cover the costs associated with this dredge. It will truly make the Mayanus River Channel a much more usable water course and improve access for not only boaters, but for any of the commerce in the area. So, we do want to thank the Governor and all those who participated on the various committees over the course of my tenure. I want to thank the Coastal Resources Advisory Committee, the Harbor Management Advisory Committee, and of course, now the Greenwich Harbor Commission, and all those involved. We have no executive session today. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 6th, oh, jumping ahead, August, it feels like October, I don't know, not in terms of weather, but just in terms of age. And then, the next one after that is scheduled for the 21st, but depending upon schedules of people, we'll see. We're required to have one meeting per month per Greenwich Town Charter. Okay, the next, we have no old business. I just will point out that still out there that will be coming to us is the MI request by the Greenwich Board of Education for the Lebanon School of Modular, just to keep that in people's minds. New business, today we have with us our Conservation Director Denise Savageau, who is working with the Department of Public Works on a program regarding shredding or composting leaves, and perhaps maybe that's why I was thinking of October, Denise.
No. Well, and we're trying to move ahead, so...
So, welcome, and you're here to give a presentation, a public...
Yes.
...presentation for the program.
So, I'm just gonna give you a quick overview. Again, my name is Denise Savageau, I'm the Conservation Director for the town, and I'm going to have the Senior Environmental Analyst that works with me, Alexandra Mock, is going to, has been working on this program and will do the presentation, but I just want to kind of give you a brief overview. In your packet, you have a resolution that was adopted by the Conservation Commission looking at leaves, and I'm going to distribute just quickly a website that you may want to take a look at, and that is on... And this quickly just is a program that we use as a model. It's called the Love 'Em and Leave 'Em Program. Westchester County has been operating this since about 2010. You can go to their website, they have a host of information, but basically, this program is aimed at reducing the number of leaves by having people compost on site, mulch their lawn, mulch the leaves into the lawn, so basically reducing the amount of leaves that we would have to pick up. As you know, years ago, we used to do a lot of composting in town at Holly Hill for various reasons and changes in regulations that were coming down. We did not have the land area at Holly Hill to do the composting anymore, and we had a committee that actually did an exhaustive search on how we do that, and we now actually truck most of our leaves out of town, so we have a valuable resource that get, that we pick up the leaves, it gets trucked out of town, and at expense to the town. The interesting thing with leaves, and Alexandra's gonna get into it, is they are, you know, a hidden resource that people don't think about. When you mulch them in, they provide a lot of nutrients to your lawn and whatever, they're really valuable. We actually have, I know of one garden club member who actually goes around with her wheelbarrow and wagon and picks up all the leaves on her street because she composts them all for her street. So, she actually is doing this on her little street for the town because she utilizes them. So, we're looking at getting a volunteer, putting this, it's a volunteer program, this isn't a requirement, we're not going to stop the leaf pickup program, but the idea is to be able to reduce the volume, and I think you're pretty aware of all of the challenges. If you look at the resolution, it talks about the different things, and I'm just gonna quickly read the resolution so that folks will have that in front of, will hear that, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Alexandra. So, the resolution that was adopted by the Conservation Commission and is proposed to you for adoption, hoping that you will support our program, goes as follows. Whereas the town of Greenwich recognizes that current leaf col, excuse me, whereas the town of Greenwich recognizes that current leaf collection practices are costly to the town, are not in keeping with long-term sustainability of natural resources, and often have a negative impact on human health, safety, and the natural environment as demonstrated by the following. The annual cost of leaf pickup is averaging $325,000. Piles of leaves placed along curbsides cause slippery conditions, narrow the vehicular travel lanes, and block storm drains. Leaves deposited on the street absorb oil and grease, washed off the cars, once contaminated, this valuable resource turns into a waste that makes the pollutants with them, that takes the pollutants with them when they travel downstream. Dust particles that become airborne, doring, leaf blowing may trigger allergies and asthma attacks. Blowing and collecting leaves is expensive and time-consuming. Hauling leaves away is a lost opportunity and using this valuable resource for soil amendment, protection, and fertilization. Whereas leaf shredding and composting have a variety of benefits, which include but may not be limited to, reduction of waste and disposal costs, reduction of flooding resulting from clogged storm drains, improvement of soil structure and its microbial content when shredded leaves are left in place, improvements in soil health that result in conservation of soil moisture, modification of its temperature, prevention of erosion, and inhibition of weed growth, increase the efficiency of nutrient uptake by plants, decreases or eliminates the need for leaf blowing, which saves energy, labor, and time. Less or no leaf blowing significantly reduces dust and noise pollution. Whereas, the Conservation Commission, in coordination with the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Public Works, has developed an outreach program on leaf shredding and composting that includes the implementation of a demonstration program on town-owned lands to lead by example. A series of workshops that will provide free education to all property owners willing to participate. Now, therefore, be resolved that the town of Greenwich endorses this leaf recycling program and encourages all property owners, landscape professionals, property managers, and caretakers to make optimal use of this rich organic resource by mulching or composting leaves on private properties, and in doing, help the town to reduce the cost of unnecessary leaf disposal and promote sustainable practices. So, further resolved, the town encourages property owners, landscape professionals, property managers, and caretakers to use the town's educational programs as guidance and contact the Conservation Commission staff, that's 203-622-6461 for any further questions. So, basically, that's an endorsement of the program, it kind of gives an overview of the program. I'm gonna just quickly turn it over to Alexandra so she can give you what she's been working on and how we're looking to roll out this program in the near future this fall. Yes?
Yep.
We used to call this black gold.
Absolutely.
It was wonderful.
It is, it's good stuff, and there's a lot of people who still call it that. I'm gonna turn it over to Alex, and she can basically give you a quick overview of the program and how we're going to be rolling this out in coordination with the other departments. Thank you.
Alexandra Mock, Conservation Commission staff. Yes, leaves are a great resource, and we're actually wasting it, so it's time to take the advantage of them and start recycling them like we recycle a few other items from our household. So, our program was inspired by the Westchester Love 'Em and Leave 'Em, just like Denise mentioned, but we are going to take this program a little bit to a different level, and we've learned from their mistakes and would like to make this more intensive in Greenwich. We'll start with the survey, would like to learn what the habits are, how people are dealing with leaves on their properties right now, and what is going to take them to change their habit and actually incorporate those leaves into their landscape and make their soil benefit from them. We are going to have a Steering Committee which is going to be overseeing the program, and we are going to invite, actually, we already started meetings with Tree Conservancy, Community Gardens, Green Schools, Greenwich Green and Clean, GRAB, Board of Education, Parks and Recreation, DPW, Garden Clubs, and of course, Us Conservation Commission. We are applying for grants, and we are hoping to receive $20,000, and actually, DPD's seen our program as a unique program because this program is really for the waste reduction initiatives, and they were envisioning that this is an extension of recycling, and we just convinced them that leaf recycling is actually part of it, and they are very excited about it. We are going to start with a pilot program, so we are going to be building compost bins outside of two schools, and we chose Riverside and Eastern Elementary, Eastern Middle School, and Parks and Recreation is going to be involved in it. We have huge support from both schools, and also Parks and Recreation staff is on board, and those bins are going to be for leaf collection and composting. Now, we are going to also provide many workshops, and those school grants, which are going to be maintained the way we would like them to be maintained, so the leaves are going to be shredded into the lawn as mode, as the lawn is mode, and also composted, the excess leaf is going to be composted on site. This is going to be a demonstration, demonstration grant for property owners and also landscape professionals, we are going to provide several workshops for them. But the most important, I thought that we have to go a little bit deeper, and we have to reach out to our schools and raise those low ones and make sure that they understand the process and they value actually the leaves and how important they are for our environment. So, 7th graders are going to be included in their, include in their curriculum, a program about composting, they're going to be learning, and this is going to be scientific approach, they're going to be learning what happens from the, between leave being born to the leaf being decomposed and returning nutrients to the soil. 2nd graders are going to have vermicompost, so we're going to bring the worms to them, and we're going to show them how to maintain worms and how to feed them, and what happens with the leftover food, which they can eat or they don't want to eat, and we will focus on fruits and vegetables, we're not going to introduce anything else. And then, very exciting, would like to create compost clubs, and this is going to be after-school program, and those kids are going to be responsible for bringing posters every single day to cafeteria and show which ones, which section of lunch could be compostable, and we are going to focus only on fruits and vegetable leftovers, fresh, not cooked. And this is going to be used for our bins full of leaves to provide nitrogen source because, as you know, leaves have carbon and kitchen scraps have nitrogen, and we need this combination for the compost to be successful. So, and we are going to, of course, take advantage of those bins, so we're going to bring the 7th graders and show them how the compost is being made and then what happens after this, and we are going to ask them to measure the temperature of the compost, to weight how much they collect every single day from cafeteria, and the 7th graders are going to make graphs of it, and hopefully, this is going to encourage and involve more kids into this program. We are partnering also with, as I mentioned, with Garden Education Center, and they are part of the Fair Child Challenge Program, which is a national program, and we're taking advantage of it, so we're going to ask students to learn about compost and leaves and prepare their design of t-shirts and posters, and also bookmarks, and the winner designs are going to be used for our promotions. For those who are busy or elderly and they can attend our workshops, we are going to have a coaching program so people can sign in, and we're going to bring composting to their homes. We're going to come and hopefully be able to bring a free compost bin, we're going to show them how to set up compost, and also how to shred and mold, shred leaves into their lawns. We are going to support our program with a website, there will be a YouTube video where you can actually see how to do this, and we're going to involve local media and going to have brochures available not only at the Town Hall, but also Garden Education, Schools, et cetera. And every single year, we're going to reevaluate the program and will evaluate what works, what doesn't, and we are going to be measuring how much less leaves we are collecting every year, and also how many less hours we are spending to collect leaves. And I'm here if you have any questions.
In terms of quantitative benchmarks, in terms of you'll know then through, do you have benchmarks set up now?
So, well, yes, we know how many, an average year of truckloads we have of leaves collected, and then after implementation of the program, we are going to measuring and seeing whether or not we are successful and those truckloads decreasing. And then also many hours, because that's another measurements, because sometimes the, you have different years, and sometimes you have heavier leaves, it all depends how much precipitation you have and how quickly you're picking them up.
How successful is it, Westchester?
They are very successful, I'm proud actually of their program, but they haven't gone to schools, they just have several workshops and mostly focusing on landscape professionals. We're going to go a little bit deeper.
Great, thank you very much for your initiative, and Denise, one of the questions I had just simply was, it sounds to me like you're seeing greater cooperation and interest on the part of the schools to work with you to do these type of programs.
Yeah, this was a great venture. I, yeah, I think, as you know, several years ago, we, working, Gail Hagergard had started with PTAC Green Schools, and that has been a really great way for us to be working with the schools, but also, the school facilities folks that we're working with have been really good, some Ron Manton, just really wonderful to work with, and of course, on the school grounds, we also have the, you know, Parks and Rec takes care of that, so I think it's a great collaborative on how you can utilize the school grounds, demonstrate this, but also then working into the curriculum, and Green Schools has been instrumental helping work with that and the Board of Education, so.
Great, well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there any comment on the proposed resolution? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
Certainly.
Without objection.
Thanks, Denise.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Alexandra, for your work on the initiative. The next item on our agenda under new business is item B, which is a request from the Department of Public Works for temporary intersection closure and detour route for Mason Street at Lexington Avenue. We have with us Gabrielle Sarcasticoe from the Department of Public Works Engineering Division, and Chief Engineer Jim Michael.
Good morning. Good morning, Selectmen. Gabrielle Sarcasticoe, Senior Civil Engineer. I'm here today to request a one-week temporary, partial intersection closure for the north corner of Lexington Avenue and Mason Street. It's for the Phase 1 of two phases of construction, which will start Mason Street and Church Street to improve drainage. The contractor that will be conducting the work is Jokin Development of White Plains, New York. The purpose for the one-week partial intersection closure is so that the contractor can retrofit an existing manhole at that particular intersection. The existing pipe at that area is 36-inch diameter. We're increasing the pipe diameter to 54 inches. In order to complete that work, for the contractor's safety, we need to close that intersection at that particular corner. So, the contractor will start downstream with his work and then work his way upstream. That will be the first thing that he does when he starts construction. Traffic, traffic will be able to continue running south on Mason Street, they'll be able to make that right-hand turn from Amadrone Crossway onto Mason Street. Traffic will be detoured from Lincoln Avenue up Millbank to East Putnam Avenue. So, traffic will not be able to proceed north on Mason Street or make a right-hand turn onto Lexington Avenue. Jim and I went door-to-door to all business owners within the project limits on Mason Street and Church Street to notify them of the proposed work. We sent a public mailing out to all owners and businesses and residents. The letter which we sent out included a link to the DPW webpage, which we noted that anyone interested in the project should check back for updated schedule. At this time, we don't have an exact date for the one-week partial intersection enclosure. The date is to be determined because the start of construction is dependent on Connecticut Natural Gas completing a gas line relocation. One of the relocation areas is on YMCA property, so Connecticut Natural Gas is in the process of working out easement with YMCA. We heard back from CNG this morning that they're in the final stages of finalizing that easement. As soon as they have that easement, they can start their work, and then once Connecticut Natural Gas is complete with their work, Jokin Development can start. So, the work at this intersection is the very first thing that they will do because this area is downstream of all the drainage that comes through the area. Any questions?
Any questions?
The only question I might have is, is there any road resurfacing going on in this area?
So, this is a very small part of the drainage project. The area highlighted in orange is where all the construction is going to be taking place, where we're going to be replacing smaller-size pipe with larger-size pipe. Once all that work is complete, the contractor will come through and mill and pave the road, so there'll be new pavement, new line striping, and new road.
Gabrielle, will this project alleviate what is often seen when we get flash storms on Sherwood, you know, the flood? I noticed recently the paper had a picture of standing water on the roadway after some torrential rain. Will this project alleviate the problems on Sherwood?
Actually, the problems on Sherwood is going to be alleviated through the second phase of construction. So, this is the first phase. The second phase of construction, which we're going to go out to bid in the fall or winter, is going to be taking place at the intersection of Lafayette Avenue and East Putnam Avenue, and continue all the way through East Putnam Avenue to Mayor Avenue, where we're going to be increasing the pipe size of the drainage network, and that will also include the construction on Sherwood Place. So, that will be the second phase of construction. In order to complete, in order to improve that area, we have to do this area first because it's downstream.
In terms of, and final question, in terms of the timetable for that second phase, what are we anticipating?
If we go out to bid in the winter, by the time we have the bids back and analytics and... If we go out to bid in the winter, by the time we have the bids back and analyzed and the contractor can start construction, that will be sometime in the spring or summer of next year.
Great. Any questions? Anyone have any questions who's here today that may be impacted? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the requested temporary intersection closure and detour route for Mason Street at Lexington Avenue as is presented. Is it? Second. Without objection.
Thank you.
Item C on our agenda under new business is a request for a temporary road closure for an event that is now in its fifth year, in its titled Fashion on the Avenue. With us today is Jerry Corrigan, who's the founder and producer of Greenwich Fashion on the Avenue. We were very pleased to support your initial efforts in bringing attention to the various retailers and merchandisers who call Greenwich home. And I think this is another way for us, a small way for the town through its governing entities to support local businesses and attract people to the town and really emphasize the Greenwich brand. So we know that the proposed road closure is moving south. It will be from Elm Street to Haven Meyer Place this year versus Lewis Street to Elm Street in prior years. And this is in part to coordinate with one of the community partners, the Greenwich Arts Council, who is very supportive of this event. And again, I'm very happy that you're going forward with it. If anyone has any questions. I volunteered Mr. Marzulla Model if you want to talk with him.
Thanks.
He's the youngest and most vibrant on this board. So any motion to approve the requested?
So move.
Second. Without objection.
Thanks Jerry.
Jerry, thank you very much for your work in promoting this and also in your new endeavor.
Thanks Jerry. Thank you.
Okay, item D is a presentation by the First Selectmen's Community Development Advisory Committee. The committee has been working diligently over the last several months reviewing numerous requests for a finite amount of funding of these federal community block grant dollars. The program is administered by Princess Irfe through the Community Development Block Grant Office. And the committee is chaired by Alma Redkers, who has been chairing this now, Alma, for 10 years. Eight?
Ninety-six.
Six. Well, you've certainly been, so Alma's been on the committee for 20 years. Prior to her service on this committee, she was the ranking member of the Board of Estim and Taxation. So the purpose today is really to present the findings of the committee in anticipation of a public hearing that is scheduled.
August 11th.
August 11th. I would ask if you could, for the members of the committee that are here, perhaps you can go through and just ask them to stand and introduce them.
Yes, well, I was going to, sorry. Good morning. And for the record, I'm Princess Irfe, Community Development Administrator for the Town of Greenwich. First, I'd like to thank the board for adding this item to today's meeting agenda and for allowing the CD Advisory Committee to present their CDBG Program Year 2016 funding recommendations to the First Selectmen. Please note that the CDAC funding recommendations are being formally submitted to the First Selectmen only. And as such, there are no actions required from the full Board of Selectmen. So before I proceed with my information, I'd like to recognize the advisory committee members that are present today, as well as agency representatives who also made the time to attend the Board of Selectmen meeting. If they can just please stand up so that I can introduce them, the advisory committee members, or if they can introduce themselves and the district that they present. Teresa.
Stantin District 5.
Nancy.
We had Chris earlier, sorry. And the advisor, yes, the agency representatives, we have Greenwich Historical Society.
Abelis.
Abelis, Dennis Perry.
Raquel Virgo.
Raquel Virgo. Inspiga.
Monica Borji. YWCA Greenwich.
YWCA. GADC.
Greg Drankin. River House. GADC.
Terry.
Greenwich Housing Authority.
Family Centers.
Family Centers. Thank you. Thank you for attending. So as I stated earlier, the funding recommendations are to be submitted by the CD Advisory Committee. However, before I call upon Ms. Alma Redkers, the CDAC Chair, I would like to provide the board with some background on the CDBG program and the program process. The CDBG program is a federally funded entitlement program administered by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The Town of Greenwich qualifies as an entitlement community and is awarded CDBG funds to carry out a wide range of community development activities to improve community facilities, programs, and services through sub recipients, which is our agency, nonprofit agency's local ed area. In order to receive the annual CDBG entitlement grant, the town must develop and submit to HUD a consolidated plan, which includes an annual plan that identifies the goals and lists the activities that will be funded for the upcoming program year. The consolidated plan also includes the annual CAPR, which is an assessment or evaluation report due at the close of every program year. Each of these plans is prepared by the CDBG office to ensure that the town meets all the various federal regulations, laws, certifications, and requirements of the CDBG program. The CDBG program currently runs on a calendar year from January 1st to December 31st. The CDBG program process was developed and designed to fit within the budgetary process of the town. The planning of the, the planning of the town's CDBG program begins a year ahead of the program year commencement. Thus, for program year 2016, which is what the advisory committee will be presenting, the planning, the planning component, which includes the work performed by the advisory committee, occurs in 2015. The CD Advisory Committee is established, or was established, to meet, to meet the citizen participation requirements of the CDBG program. Under this requirement, Greenwich must develop and follow a plan which provides for and encourages citizen participation and which emphasizes participation of persons of low and moderate income residence. To ensure maximum citizen participation and input, the citizens are part of the CDBG process in the planning process of the annual action plan. The CD Advisory Committee is comprised of local town officials, local board and commission members, and representatives from various community organizations and agencies. Current CDAC membership of 28 individuals with 23 regular members and five alternate members include a representative from each of the 12 RTM districts, two representatives from the BET, a representative from the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Social Services, Board of Health, Housing Authority Commission, National Organization of Women, League of Women Voters, and citizen representatives. I just wanted to be clear that the advisory, this CD Advisory Committee is a volunteer committee and is an advisory to the First Selectmen. The main purpose of the CD Advisory Committee is to provide maximum citizen participation and input during the planning component of the CDBG program process. Each of the CD Advisory Committee members work diligently and in detail to ensure that their recommendations will result to the CDBG funds being provided to activities that benefit low and moderate income persons through improved community facilities, housing units, programs, and services. The many number of hours and quality of work devoted by the CD Advisory Committee during the planning phase results to a funding recommendation that equates to the best use of the CDBG funds to ensure greatest benefit to the target population. Just following is a list of the work that we've been doing since the beginning of the year. So March 31st, we held a public hearing for, to gather input from citizens and agency providers on the priority needs to be considered for the development of the 2016 annual plan. The same day, the advisory committee held their first meeting to establish their priorities and goals. April 6th, we opened, or we, the CDBG office issued the Notice of Funding Availability and included a townwide mailing or email notification of the Program Year 2016 Proposal Application Form for CDBG Funding Consideration. All proposals were due back to the office May 7th. So beginning May 7th, the CDBG office reviewed each application to ensure completeness and more importantly, eligibility under the CDBG program guidelines. A total of 32 proposed activities were submitted. Fifteen were under the Public Human Service Programs category and 17 were under the Acquisition or Capital Improvement Projects category. The total amount of CDBG funding requested was $1,378,995. May 27th, the advisory committee held their second meeting of the year and in which they reviewed and discussed the 2016 proposals and applications. During this meeting, the advisory committee established and assigned for each of the 32 proposed activities, a subcommittee. Each subcommittee must go onsite visits, perform in-depth evaluations, interviews, and submit a subcommittee report to the full advisory committee. All of these work must be done prior to their June 18th meeting. On June 4th, prior to the June 18th meeting, the CD Advisory Committee held their public hearing to allow each of the agency applicants to present their proposed activities. The CD Advisory Committee required attendance from the agency applicants. And finally, on June 18th, after the CD Advisory public hearing and the subcommittee group visits, interviews, and reports were submitted, the CD Advisory began their deliberation to produce a final funding recommendation to the First Selectmen. The summary of work that has been performed, including the public notifications, three public meetings, two public hearings, plus onsite visits and interviews, speak to the volume of the CDBG program process during the first half of the year. Following today's CD Advisory Committee submission of their funding recommendations to the First Selectmen, the First Selectmen will hold a public hearing, which we have scheduled on August 11th, Tuesday, to begin at 7:00 PM in the same room, town hall meeting room. The purpose of the First Selectmen's public hearing is to solicit citizen input and comments on the CD Advisory Committee's funding recommendations for the CDBG Program Year 2016. After the public hearing, the First Selectmen has the authority to change the funding recommendations of the CD Advisory Committee and issue the final funding allocations for the CDBG Program Year 2016. The First Selectmen's final funding allocations will then be incorporated into the 2016 annual plan to be prepared by our office and will be submitted and presented to the BET for their review and action during their November meeting. After BET approval, the CDBG office will submit and present the 2016 Annual Action Plan, still in draft, in draft format, to the RTM during their December meeting. Following local town approval, the 2016 Annual Action Plan will then be submitted to HUD for their review and action. Note that I have only covered the planning portion of the CDBG program process. The CDBG office also administers and monitors all ongoing activities for the current year, not the year being planned for. Concurrent with the planning phase, the CDBG office undertakes the necessary actions in developing and submitting the required documents, reports, plans, data, and all other requirements due to HUD. The town's CDBG program works well because it was developed with the appropriate checks and balances needed to ensure that all local, state, and federal laws, regulations, and requirements are met. Thus, there is not one individual, group, board, or committee that has full authority and control over the allocation of the CDBG funds. I hope that I have provided you with enough information on the CDBG program. In addition, I wanted to highlight the value of the CD Advisory Committee to the CDBG program process. Although the CD Advisory Committee is only an advisory committee to the First Selectmen and has no decision-making authority with regards to the allocation of the CDBG funding, their input helps the town meet the citizen participation requirement of the program and their dedication to the process is invaluable. I believe that the town is best served when dedicated individuals volunteer their time, talent, and knowledge for the betterment of the community and for the benefit of all residents and citizens. This is what the CD Advisory Committee and the CDBG program represents. Thank you.
Princess, thank you. And again, a reiteration of thanks to all the volunteers who've spent countless hours on this.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Princess also. That was an amazing summary and more than a summary of what, what your office does and what our committee does and the whole process. So I don't know that I have to provide more information. What you have before you is the memorandum to Mr. Tessie from Princess Irfe and it, that is sort of summarizes the recommendations. And then you have a sheet with the recommendations, with the requested funding from the agencies and the recommendations of our CDAC committee. There, as Princess said, there were 32 activities requested that, I think the number of agencies was 23 because some agencies made requests for more than one activity. So the activities are the specific programs. As you see, our, the requests we had were 1.3 million or maybe somewhat more than that, which was almost double of what we had available in terms of the $725,000 grant that Ms. Irfe had estimated as will be available for program year 2016. That is an estimate. We never know till the following year exactly how much money we will have, but that is her best guess estimate. And that amount has been sort of stable for the last couple of years. In addition to that, we have reprogrammed funds of $104,369, which come from different sources of, there's some, some of the activities that have been closed out had a little bit of money left over. One at least was canceled. There's a loan repayment of principal present interest from Parsonage Cottage for $38,000. That's about the annual amount. Then we did get additional money for 2015 that we hadn't anticipated. So the best guess estimate was actually a little under what we actually got. So we were able to reprogram that. So we were able to add that to the money we could recommend to allocate this program, upcoming program year 2016. So the total amount was $829,369.37. That was all we had to allocate and the demand was very great. And it's, I have to commend the committee, which is consists of 22 voting members or 23, but one person moved away for the League of Women Voters Representatives. So technically, we have 22 voting members plus five alternates. And as you heard from Princess, the committee met quite a number of times and we made our final recommendations on June 18th and used the recommendations of the subcommittees as a baseline. And our job really is about cutting, unfortunately, because we just have so much and the need is so great. And so we're balancing between the needs of seniors and the needs of children and domestic violence issues in the community and teen suicide and so many problems of a human service nature. And we, you know, we, we're trying to balance and see that everybody gets as much as we can possibly give them because every one of the agencies is more than deserving. So the principle that we use is the Goals and Priorities Statement that we adopt every year, which usually doesn't change or hasn't changed in a while. And that's to identify programs, services, and capital projects that will serve the immediate needs of the most vulnerable constituents in our community. And of course, we are also required to fund programs that provide services to 51% low and moderate income people by HUD definition. So those most vulnerable people are also, for the most part, low and moderate income. So anyway, I commend my committee because this is not easy work. And so I'm here for any questions you may have regarding the allocations.
Just in terms of if you could reiterate the program year start date so that it's Jan, is it calendar?
Cal, it's calendar, right? It's calendar. It's so January. It's not, it's not consistent with our fiscal year. It has nothing to do with our budget process. It's a separate.
Understood. I just wanted to make sure that's publicly noted. And then also, in terms of if you are a beneficiary of the funds, what are the limitations on the time that you have to expend the funds?
Usually what we do is for the public service or human service activities, when we sign the contract, they, we, the amount of CDBG funds that are being provided for these activities. these activities represent a small portion of the total program cost, so they don't have any issues expending those funds through the end of the program year that we signed the contract. Say for two thousand fifteen, when we signed the contract, the, the contract expires December thirty-first, which is the close of the program year. For the capital improvement projects, we typically have a year after we sign the contract, but in some cases, and I know that in the past, contracts have been extended for several number of years. I'm not sure if you remember, under my predecessor, Nancy Brown, there were three contract years, uh, program years for Pathways for the Brookside, uh, Brookside, Brookside property.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good example.
But that's typically what happens.
Could they, in theory, then, if they're, if, I mean, if, if an agency is requesting X amount of dollars and you allocate short of that, could they, in theory, then come back the next year and try to get that, or are they obligated to use it? My point is, can they, can they take the money and use it somewhere else, or do they have to use it?
They, they have to use it for the, for the proposed project because that's what we proposed to HUD. If they are going to change the use of that funds, then we'll, we'll have to, to take the necessary actions to meet the, the requirements of the program and advise HUD and, or provide HUD with the, with the request to change that. For your, your first question, what's been done in the past is, as Alma said, we have a limited number, they have a limited number of amounts that we anticipate to receive. Some of the capital projects really is, what they do is, when, when it comes to the first selectmen's public hearing, we ask them if, for a particular allo, uh, funding recommendation, will the project continue, or will the project be completed? And if not, can they do a, can they phase in? So, sometimes they do come back, sometimes some of the agencies, uh, the agencies find resources from other programs or grant funding.
And then my, 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 my last question. These are all Greenwich-based programs, or no, and here's my question, but I'm assuming that it might not be Greenwich-based, but people of Greenwich are using, and do we know statistics how many people are using shelters, et cetera, et cetera? Do we have any?
So, we've asked the shelter, the agencies that we provide, most of the agencies are Greenwich-based. Some of the agencies we provide funding for are in Stamford, but it's for the, it's for agencies that have programs or services that are not provided in Greenwich, so they are accessible to Greenwich residents.
And are Greenwich residents using them? Do we know? Or is there a, no, to track for privacy? I mean, we don't.
We, I mean, we always ask that question with regard, obviously, to the homeless shelter, but you can't, I mean, where a person originated is not something that their statistics, there are probably far more people in homeless shelters that originated in Greenwich than we would imagine.
Sure.
And, you know, at any given, when they become homeless in Stamford, they're in Stamford, so, you know, I don't, we always ask that question, but we don't have a shelter, and we feel, and we've always felt an obligation to meet that need, so we've, we have consistently funded the shelter.
Sure.
We also, with regard to the question of phasing money in or the timeframe, I mean, we, we typically would not fund a program when it was clear that in that program year they could not use the money at all because that's tying up money that could be used in the immediate moment by someone else.
Thanks, Alma. Thank you, Princess.
And just, just to add, for the homeless shelter, Greenwich is part of the continuum of care within the Stamford, Norwalk area, so we do support the, the shelter for the homeless in Stamford. We also support the food bank, which is located in Stamford, but they do provide services to the agencies in Greenwich.
Sure. Great. Again, thank you.
Thank you, both.
We do have.
Any other questions, or?
I, I don't have any more questions, John.
Okay.
It's hard work. Thank you, Alma. Thank you, Princess.
I know that there are some folks here in, I know Glenville, you're here. Did you want to comment?
Please.
Okay, I will accord that, but understand that we don't want to necessarily recreate the public hearing that's going to be on August eleventh today because it's really not published as such. So, certainly, we can answer a question or take a brief comment on your item, but in, in fairness, because then we're basically reproducing what we have scheduled for August eleventh as a public hearing. So, since you're here, if you could be respectful of that, I would appreciate it.
Unfortunately, I'm, my name is Sandy Cornbrink. I'm the president of the Glenville Volunteer Fire Company and an active certified volunteer firefighter. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be, I'm going to be out of the country traveling on the eleventh of August, and therefore, will have additional representation on the part of our district chief. Accompanying me is Bob Fogarty, who is our board chairman. The reason for today and, and the absence, and my absence on the eleventh is just to put forth a proposition, if I may, with regard to the two items that we had requested, which had been denied, and what we wanted to have reconsidered in terms of the essential need for this in the areas that we serve in the HUD geography and the low-income areas that are served out of Greenwich, out of Glenville. One is a pack tracker, and this is designed to help locate down firefighters, and the other is a high-volume vacuum cleaner that is designed to pump out basements, and we do this with great degree of frequency. We were, the total of that amount was six thousand dollars and was denied, and it's something that we find to be absolutely essential to the needs of the services that we can provide to Greenwich and to certainly into Glenville. That's basically it.
Sandy, can I interrupt then?
Sure.
And, and I'm using your words, essential. Why wasn't this, is, in, in the capital budget or of the fire department, then?
Uh, we request this, but that is up to the fire department, the, the fire administration to determine whether or not we can or cannot have something.
But shouldn't it, then, I, I guess, to address them as well? I, I, I understand what you're saying here.
We have.
And what, so, are they disagreeing that it's not essential, or what's the issue, then?
Uh, I, we, it was denied. I mean, we're just, it's not, it was not something that was granted to us. Our chief puts forth a, a budget recommendation for equipment every year, and we didn't get So, this, you have done, just, if I may, just to digress for one second, with regard to this pack tracker, and I'll leave this with you. The pack tracker is the, the new Scott Packs that all firefighters wear are now in Greenwich equipped with a sensor, and this sensor triggers an activation methodology in this piece of equipment that provides line of sight through smoke and through different objects, can locate down firefighters who are incapacitated. This pack tracker is located in several different fire stations around Greenwich, as I understand it. We're simply saying that based on the needs that we have in the wide geographic area that we cover, more is better. And we felt that from the standpoint of these two items of six thousand dollars, that it's very essential.
Yeah, which I'm, which I'm, I'm not debating. I, I think if it is essential, I think, but I, I think, in my opinion, anyway, this should be focused, I think, on the capital program allotted by the, the fire commissioner or the, the fire chief. I, I, if it's, I mean, if it's essential, and I take your word for it, it is.
It is essential.
Yeah.
Sandy, we will certainly request in the sixteen, seventeen budget that the chief give due consideration, particularly the two items you reference, the one that you use for pumpouts of basements and so forth. Clearly, in the geographic area that is within the Glenville District, you have, we have had basement flooding in the Pemberwick area.
Ready.
And I believe, you know, we could certainly look at the, the data in terms of the census track. I mean, it, I don't know, Alma, if, Princess, have you looked at that in terms of, from that vantage point, if it qualified, or?
Yes, I'm sorry.
It does, but it does, so, but certainly, we will put forth, I think, as the board can make the, make the statement that they universally request the chief allocated in, and I think, you know, that should carry some additional weight.
Very good. Can't ask for more than that.
So.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We should write a letter from the board that says we want this, and have everybody agree to it.
Yeah.
Okay, if there isn't anyone else who wishes to comment on these recommendations, and will be here on the eleventh, we'll conclude this item. And again, thank you for attending today. Thank you for your volunteerism on supporting the work of the committee, hard work that it is. And again, thank you to Alma and Princess for your leadership over it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, both.
We are just taking, Mr. Marzullo, I needed a brief recess, but the next item on the agenda is E., and it's referred to as the Zubek mooring issue. I see a number of individuals in attendance today that are pertinent to the discussion, and for purposes of process, we've asked the Assistant Town Attorney, Amina Ahmad, specifically, once Mr. Marzullo comes back, to go through for purposes of edification to the board, particularly since we have a new member of the board, since these issues were perhaps last discussed, to review that, and then to, you know, the role and authority, and then we'll take comment from whomever else is pertinent to the issue. Well, let's wait until she presents, and then you can put it, if you could stay off to the side for a minute, just because we can't see, I see Ms. Savage, I don't want to have her blocked. That's good. So, good morning, Ms. Ahmad. See you. So, before you, I just gave a little overview as to that. Amina is going to give.
Awesome. Thank you.
Amina is going to give a introduction to what really the issue is, what role this board plays, and then what authority is, is granted in decisions that may need to be made, and we'll then hear from those in attendance who are relevant and pertinent to the issue.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are here this morning.
Lower the mic.
Yes. Without breaking it, I'll try. Okay. We are here this morning under the.
You're in the back, yeah, you could talk more into it.
Okay. We are here this morning under the authority granted to this board under Special Acts ninety-three and two eighty-eight, which, as, as you're familiar with, deal with rules and regulations pertaining to moorings, anchoring of vessels in the harbor, speed of vessels, and related issues. And the special acts essentially say that the Board of Selectmen have the authority to regulate the anchoring and mooring of all vessels, boats, and craft within our harbors, and to make rules, regulations, orders pertaining to the mooring and anchoring of vessels, crafts, boats in our harbors. And the specific reason we're here today is because Mr. Charles Zubek, who is a resident of Greenwich, approached this board and asked the board for its input on an issue having to do with a mooring request that Mr. Zubek had made to our harbor master. The information I have is based on two letters. One is a letter that Mr. Zubek wrote to the Commissioner of the DOT, Mr. Reddiker. That letter is dated June twenty-third of this year, and by the way, Mr. Zubek is a resident of Twenty-Five Indian Chase Drive. So, on June twenty-third, Mr. Zubek wrote to the Commissioner of Transportation saying that he had filed a permit, which he did with the town of Greenwich, seeking a mooring in Greenwich Harbor. He'd also paid his fee. However, the, the bottom line was that Mr. Zubek said the harbor master had denied him mooring at the location that he had requested. My understanding, again, based on this letter of June twenty-third, is that he was initially told by the harbor master that he could go ahead and deploy the, deploy the mooring in the location that he had requested. I see there's a map up there, and I'm sure Mr. McMillan will, will give us the location, the specific location. So, Mr. Zubek says that he was initially given permission to go ahead and deploy the mooring. He'd filled out the appropriate paperwork, paid the fee. However, sometime later, he was told by the harbor master that he could no longer deploy the mooring at the location he had requested. Mr. Zubek says in the letter to the Commissioner of DOT that he has been the owner of a mooring in Indian Harbor, Chimney Cove, for over sixty years, and he.
Amina, I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but is it just, is, is it, is it common practice for people to apply for a mooring, mooring, you say yes, you cash a check, and then you deny it afterwards? Or do we wait until we, I, I'm just curious what the practice is?
My understanding is when someone wants a mooring, they fill out the application, write a check to the town of Greenwich. It's submitted to the selectman's office, and Ms. Monahan takes care of the paperwork, the check is deposited, and then the paperwork is copied and sent to the harbor master. So, I think if you're asking, you know, is the check deposited before the individual is told to go ahead and deploy a mooring, I, my understanding is that may be the case.
Was this a pre-existing mooring, though, when it's been in that location?
And that I don't know. Again, the only information I have is based on, on the letters and some other correspondence that I received. I'm sure Mr. Zubek and Mr. McMillan will provide you with the specifics of that mooring.
And then how often, out of, out of the hundreds of moorings that we take in applications for in checks, are then after the fact denied? I'm, I'm just curious.
I don't have an answer for that. I don't know.
All right.
Yeah. So, Mr. Zubek wrote to the Commissioner. The Commissioner's office did respond to Mr. Zubek. The letter, which I believe you have, is dated June thirty, two thousand fifteen, from a Mr. Salvatore of the Maritime Office of the DOT. Mr. Salvatore in that letter refers to the special acts that I started with, the special acts of ninety-three and two eighty-eight. Mr. Salvatore says in his response essentially that those special acts give this board the authority to regulate anchoring and mooring of all vessels, boats, and craft, and to designate those places of mooring grounds and make such other reasonable rules, regulations, or orders, respecting the use of said waters by all vessels, boats, and craft. Mr. Salvatore says that his office has found that this matter of Mr. Zubek's mooring is not an issue of safe and efficient operation of harbors and navigable waterways, and therefore, it's not a DOT issue, is essentially what he said. And he advised Mr. Zubek to approach the selectmen, since you have jurisdiction concerning matters of the Greenwich harbors based on the two special acts, and he recommended that Mr. Zubek contact you for resolution of the matter with the harbor master. And so, that's why we're here today, just to give you a bit of the factual background that I'm aware of as to the specific details. I, I'm sure we'll hear from Mr. Zubek and from the harbor master. And my understanding is the reason for the harbor master denying the specific location for a mooring, there are actually two reasons from what I could glean from some of the cor- correspondence. One reason is that the proposed location of the mooring is 150 feet from an osprey platform. I think that number has changed a little bit between yesterday and today. I saw a map that showed 240 feet. Again, Mr. McMillan has a map with the specific location, so I think he'll go into the exact distance. And the other reason Mr. McMillan gave was that the depth of the water in this particular area is very shallow, and is two feet at low tide. Again, that's not something I'm independently aware of. We have to rely on what Mr. Zubek and Mr. McMillan have to say about that.
So, sorry. So, it was denied because of, it's too, I'm confused. Denied because it was too shallow? And as the First Selectman asked, this has been a mooring that's been in existence for a while, or no?
Again, I don't have the answer to that.
I think, Amina, for purposes of process, because I'm not going to allow today to turn into a circus. We've sort of turned a new leaf, even though Ken is here for that in preps. This is a process.
Yes.
And this body, what you're saying, can adjudicate it under the Special Acts, as it is referenced. Until such time, we have a harbor management plan, then it would go through the Commission. So, I think if you can just sort of summarize in terms of, once all things are presented, what decision would this Board be making?
Yes, absolutely.
From a legal point of view.
Okay. Before I get to that, if I may, again, this ties into the legal issue here, is the distance from an osprey platform. And that brings into play not just the Board of Selectmen's authority under the Special Acts, but it also brings into play the DEEP and their Wildlife Office. So, in this particular instance, we are going outside of just the Special Acts. I think ultimately, we will need some input from the DEEP and their Wildlife Office.
And there is, we were lucky to have Denise with us today. I presume when she stayed around, that there might be a connection, because I remember reading this. Is Denise able to address that?
Denise is. I reached out to Denise yesterday, and I've also been in touch with the Wildlife Biologist at the State DEEP. Now, the reason the distance from the osprey platform becomes important is because there's a general permit in the state of Connecticut having to do with the location of osprey platforms.
Can you explain what that is? The osprey platform?
Okay.
For people that are not osprey friendly?
And I'll give you my one-second version of it, but I know Denise is very familiar with osprey platforms. But essentially, these are structures that are permitted by the DEEP under a general permit, which allow ospreys to build their nests.
That's what I thought.
And there is a diagram that I can show you of what an osprey platform might look like.
All right.
I don't claim to be an expert on osprey platforms.
Yeah.
But there is a regulation in the general permit under the state of Connecticut, which provides for a 600-foot buffer zone around an osprey platform. So, here, there's a proposed mooring that is 150 feet or some distance, but certainly within the 600 feet of the buffer zone, which is required under the state regulations.
So, just to be clear, though, in terms of, we have all these entities that have some governing role over this, then that's really incumbent upon the DEEP to enforce, not this Board, or not, I would say, the harbor master, right? I mean, clarity of purpose.
That's a very good point. The Wildlife Biologist at DEEP said that their office is in a position to make recommendations based on the input you get today from Mr. Zubek as to the use of the mooring, from the harbor master, as to the distances that are involved, any other issues having to do with the osprey platform. We can then go back to the Wildlife Biologist at DEEP, and they will evaluate it and give us recommendations, based on which then this Board can make a decision one way or the other. But from the DEEP perspective, they are, their main concern is the impact on this osprey platform, which I'm told is located on property that's at 21 Vista Drive. It's on a seawall, and I'm not exactly sure if there is a platform there or simply an osprey nest. Again, I'll have Denise speak to that. But in any event, the little bit of a complicating factor is the DEEP comes in and says, what is the impact of having this mooring within the 600-foot buffer zone of an existing osprey nest?
But shouldn't this be not that difficult? I mean, if Denise can speak to that or something, I mean, this shouldn't be that difficult. I mean, it's sort of, it's not the same analogy, but it's what we went through in terms of the shellfish, whatever. Shouldn't the rules be the rules? I mean, if it's within whatever, why this ambiguous? Why has it come to this point?
The reason it becomes a little bit ambiguous is, I think many people here will tell you that there's moorings within the 600-foot buffer of osprey nests up and down the coast in Greenwich.
But does that make it right? All I'm saying, if there's a rule or some sort of, there's what?
Guidance.
It's guidance. Okay.
And what happens is, the DEEP will evaluate what they call, oh, yes, they'll say, absolutely, there's homes there, there's all kinds of human activity going on, there may be.
So, what's the point of having this guidance, though, if everyone's in violation? If there's homes? Denise, I'm asking a serious question.
Let her come up. I mean, this is where it gets, again. She's telling us, Denise will give us the environmental aspect, then Mr. Zubek, and then Mr. McMillan, from his role.
The, from the regulatory and legal point of view, DEEP wants to know, is this a predictable use? So, say you have 30 moorings in Greenwich Harbor, all within 600 feet of an osprey nest, and the ospreys are used to that type of activity. They've been nesting there for many years. And the use of those moorings is what DEEP calls, it's a predictable use. It's whatever use one would make of a mooring, you know, put their boat out there, go out there during the daytime, normal predictable activity, versus now, are you introducing an activity at a particular mooring or a couple of moorings, where maybe now it's going to be somewhat different?
It changes the norm.
Changes, changes the environment for the osprey.
Denise, perhaps.
Denise can probably speak to that better than I can.
So, I think it's actually somewhat apples and oranges. The recommendation on the general permit is to, for the placement of osprey poles. It's not putting, the general permit is not, does not address an activity within, coming to live with ospreys. That's something we, that's where Jenny Dixon from DEEP said we could provide guidance on, and also the Conservation Commission provides guidance on, because we're, we monitor the ospreys in Greenwich. So, when you're looking at the permit that you're talking about, so, we could use the 600-foot buffer, but the idea of that is that if someone's going to install a new osprey pole, you don't want it near electric lines, you don't want it where it's going to cause a problem for housing and whatever. Ospreys fish. They can cause a mess. So, there are people who don't necessarily want an osprey pole right in their backyard. So, that's one of the things when they do the permit, like, if it should be 600, an osprey pole should be 600 feet. I think in this case, we're not aware of an osprey pole necessarily being installed here, but ospreys don't just nest on poles that we provide. Ospreys nest where they want. And one of the things, for example, in Greenwich Cove that happened, I should say, in Greenwich Harbor that happened several years ago, is we had a barge, a crane on a barge that was doing work for the, you know, at the Grass Island Marina, and basically, we started having an osprey build a nest on the top of the barge, out to the top of the crane. And before they could complete the nest, I basically said, you need to move that crane, or it's going to be there all summer, once they have a nest and when they have chicks in it. So, they were just starting to bring some twigs in, and I had Parks and Rec move that so that we didn't end up having this complication of having a crane in the harbor all summer that we couldn't use because we had an osprey nest. But I'm just pointing that out, is that ospreys nest where they want, not necessarily poles that are put in specifically for that, but the recommendations from DEEP in terms of the 600 feet, and Ian actually just handed it to me. I had read it, but I didn't have a copy of it with me, but it says, unless specifically authorized in an approval registration, the subject osprey platform or perch pole shall be placed 300 feet from electrical lines or any other osprey platform, and 600 feet from roads, houses, industrial, or commercial facilities, and other sources of human disturbance. So, that's the recommendation where you can put a new pole, but it really doesn't address the issue that we're talking about here, is if you have an osprey, an active osprey nest, can you put a mooring there? Certainly, those are recommendations, and we can talk a little bit more about that, but I just think that clarifies, you know, in terms of, when you're talking about the 600 feet and where the 300 feet comes from.
Do you have an opinion on that?
So, in terms of the, what we're talking about, let me just give you two things that the Conservation Commission has been working on with Connecticut Audubon.
Does, the 600 feet, does that cover just moorings, or does it cover activity?
It doesn't cover, it doesn't cover moorings. It's. So, quickly, you have two maps in front of you. I'm going to start with the map that has more dots on it. This is a 2015 survey, worked on with Connecticut Audubon and volunteers in the Conservation Commission, the birding community in Greenwich. The dots you have, the green and red dots, indicate known osprey nests that have been identified by volunteers. Interestingly enough, actually, the osprey nest at Vista has not been identified here, and one of the volunteers that I know pretty well, Michael Aurelia, is going to actually go out and check on that, and we will actually put that on. But it's actually not one of the known, hadn't been on this survey. That said, at this point, we have 17, according to this, 17 nests. Michael's actually aware of a few more. We probably have over 20 active nests in Greenwich.
Who's putting those up?
No, what I'm saying is, some of them are nests that are on poles, but a lot of them, it's.
But who's putting up the poles, though?
Well, Audubon puts them out. Usually, Jim O'Brien is our resident osprey pole expert. And as a matter of fact, there's going to be an article coming out on the osprey poles. Ann Semes is in the process of doing an article that's going to be coming out shortly. So, we've been looking at this. We've got, so, basically, approximately 20 active nests in Greenwich this year. So, that's just an overview of how many nests we have going forward. The second photo is a blow-up of, off of Greenwich Point. So, in this one, it's these right here is a blow-up for the two nests. And one of the things I'll point out is, we've got these two active nests in Greenwich Cove off of Greenwich Point there. You can see all of the boat moorings there, and we have nests with active chicks, and the boat moorings don't seem to be impacting the chicks. After discussion with, you know, some of the birding community, including Michael, but also, one of the things we do check in is with, we're not sure that there would be any impact. Boating is what happens. We've got osprey nests all over. They fish where the boats are. They actively, we've, we actually have some challenges sometimes because they are a little bit too close to the boating community, because they like to clean their, eat their fish sitting on the masts of some of the boats and whatever. So, sometimes we actually get complaints. So, the fact that they will actually perch on a sailboat and eat their fish does not indicate that this becomes a problem for them in terms of, you know, their active nests and what they do. So, the recommendation would be, we do not see in terms of, from an osprey perspective, that putting a boat mooring, for residential boat mooring, in would be the type of activity that would be a problem for an osprey nest. As Amina explained, if we, if you wanted to have more, you know, detail on that, I work with Jenny Dixon all the time. She provides feedback. As a matter of fact, we've got some other issues we're working on with shorebirds that we've just received some information from her, so they can provide advice. But working with, again, the birding community, it's the town of Greenwich who's survey, who's doing this survey with Connecticut Audubon, has provided all the information, working with, like I said, our volunteers, including Mike, Cynthia Ellinger, and some others, in terms of the osprey nests. And just quickly, for your information, the green dots are osprey nests that have, quote, "been adopted by a steward who monitors them and reports on the activity." The red dots are known osprey nests, but we don't necessarily have somebody who's, quote, "adopted it as the nest that they monitor every day." So, we do have quite a few nests, and that's partly because we know some of them are out further, and people, you'll notice, a lot of the ones that are monitored are the ones closer to shore where people can see them. Some of the ones that are out a little further can't be monitored, you know, the same way. It would rely on, you know, either boat or going out on the ferry. That said, we know that they are our active nests. As I pointed out, some of these are on poles that were installed for osprey, but some of them are just the ospreys decided to nest there. Sometimes they're, for example, the one at the Boy Scout camp, that's on a cell phone tower. There's one coming out of Greenwich Harbor. That one had been for years on the Brooklyn Bridge. We always call it the Brooklyn Bridge. It's going on the ferry. You see that, that structure. That one was always there. It's actually now on the seawall. So, they don't just use platforms, they don't just nest where we want them to nest. And in the 2014 report that Connecticut Audubon put together on ospreys, they actually discussed that we have ospreys that have actually, depending on where they are, will actually nest on the ground. Not always successful, obviously predation, so they like to be up on poles, but what I'm saying is, we don't, they don't just nest in poles, they nest where they want.
Other than the obvious, what's the ecological, in terms of setting up?
Well, that's, so, we're putting up the poles to, because they were, the reason, ospreys were almost an endangered species, and they're called a sentinel species in terms of, they're really important for the part of the food chain and what they do here. And because of DDT in the food chain, they actually went near extinction, and they were going to be listed as an endangered species. With the stop of DDT, they have been coming back, but one of the things that happened in that interim is, there is a lot of encroachment on the shore. So, what the osprey poles do is provide habitat where, because you might have built a house on the shoreline, or cut down trees, so there's no nesting platform, the platforms provide nesting habitat for the birds. So, that's one of the reasons we put the poles in, is to give them nesting habitat. That said, Greenwich Point is another area. We were considering, considering putting up a pole on the island in Eagle Pond, and the birds said, forget the pole, we're just going to nest on the eagle statue, and they've had a nest on the eagle statue for the past five or six years.
Can you blame them?
Yeah, I mean, they're very adaptive. So, that said, I mean, I think if we want to pay attention, we don't want to overly disturb them, but we also know that these birds are active water birds. They're used to boating. This is a boating community. We have all of these active nests, and we do not expect that a individual residential mooring would impact the birds and the nests. When they, you know, there's a couple of things, just quickly, their biology, they actually come in and settle their nests prior to a lot of boating activity. There was a lot of activity at that time. They may not settle, but what they do is, they come in, in April, they kind of establish their nests. So, they're already pretty well established when the boaters come in, so they kind of get acclimated in the boating, the, you know, and what happens is, the most active boating time is in the summer, and by that time, the chicks have hatched, and they're actually ready to start fledging, because it's in early spring where it's more critical, and that's not when people are out on their boats as much, because it's frankly too cold to be out on the water.
So, my last question. So, is it the Conservation's opinion, then, in regards to these nests as, I mean, if you're not changing the norm, you're okay with this or not?
Yeah, we're, the Conservation Commission thinks that this is a pretty normal activity. We would not expect that this would, and I think, you know, and just quickly.
Moorings, though, correct?
Well, from a mooring perspective, we do not expect a residential mooring to have an impact on the osprey nest. It would probably be more likely, any activity in a particular person's yard, that would be more of a challenge for the osprey than the boat mooring out in the harbor, understanding that this is on a residential property. So, that, and if they're, if they're used to that residential property, and the goings-on on a residential property, what's going to happen in a boat mooring should not impact that. So. So, you know, that's kind of where we are. And I guess I just want to, while I'm talking is, one of the things the Conservation Commission has stressed in its comments when we were looking at having Harbor Management Commission was making sure that we don't do overlapping jurisdictions. And one of the things is that obviously we applaud the effort that if there's a concern about wildlife and whatever that could result as, from the mooring, they should, the Conservation Commission through its staff should be contacted about that concern and we can provide guidance to the Harbor Management Commission and the Harbor Master on this. That's our role, you know, in the town. And it's one of the things we talked about, whether, you know, if it was shell fishing, if it was a shellfish bed that was being impacted, we would expect that they would get a ruling from the Shellfish Commission. And I think that we need to really pay attention to that as we move forward with adopting this Harbor Management Plan, is understanding those jurisdictions and the roles that we have of the various town departments, whether it be the staff and/or commissions in terms of these types of things.
Can you bring something back to our board in writing that, in terms of this specifically? In terms of you don't think it's your, that it's going to affect whatever?
If you want something in writing, I can definitely give it to you. You know, it's like you have it verbally, but I can definitely give you something in writing.
Yeah, thank you.
Denise, thank you for your time today. I certainly appreciate your professional guidance and your word is your bond, so.
All right, thank you.
Denise.
Chuck, if you, excuse me, excuse me, if you could come forward only because it doesn't get picked up for the meeting.
Oh, it is.
Well, would you like to comment since we've?
Just on this particular.
Who is he?
Just curious, Denise, given all the guidance issues.
Who are you?
I'm sorry?
Your name, please.
My name is Chuck Zobeck. Given the guidance issues they're talking about, and there seem to be a lot of them that are quite ambiguous, does an individual who wants to put up an osprey nest need to get permission from anybody?
Yes, if an individual is putting up an osprey pole and particularly, and specifically inviting, they need to follow this general permit from DEP and they should contact the DEP Wildlife Office to notify. And basically because it's a general permit, they basically can reference that general permit and say, under this general permit, we're planning on installing an osprey pole. And then they would hear back from DEP, yes, you can install it. And, you know, what they would do is say, we're doing it, you know, like where this, you know, and that's where the recommendations for the 300 feet and the 600 feet, we're 300 feet away from electric lines, we're 600 feet away from residential properties, that type of thing. And what, you know, one of the things I haven't had a chance, because I was brought into this yesterday, is I don't know on Vista if they installed, if they indeed installed a pole or if the osprey just decided to nest on a pole in their yard because they thought that that was a great place to nest and that's something we will investigate.
Mr. Zobeck, did you want to just comment since the item is on our agenda at your request today and as a result of the state of Connecticut clearly delineating that we had to address this? So if you could just perhaps review your reason to appeal.
Thank you. You have copies of my letters.
We do, all the correspondence, yeah.
My name is Chuck Zobeck. I am a 62-year resident of Greenwich. Forty-two of those years have been living on Chimney Cove where I have had a mooring, which I've used very actively over that time until it was taken away by the Harbor Master recently. You have the details of what happened in my letter to the DOT, but to understand this situation, one needs to look at past events. It's no secret to the selectmen that more than two-year, the more than two-year feud between Mr. McMillan and a retired policeman over a mooring allegedly blocking access to a private channel, which resulted in the mooring being finally ordered to be removed by Mr. McMillan. Fast forward to the present, on June 21st, I received a verbal mooring approval from Mr. McMillan. On June 22nd, the very next day, that approval was revoked. What happened in those 24 hours to change his mind 180 degrees? As it turns out, Mr. McMillan's Harbor Master boat and my mooring services boat are kept at the same marina. On the morning of June 22nd, the day after my mooring approval, he seized mooring equipment that I had purchased from the retired policeman on the mooring service boat and ordered the mooring service not to deploy it. He then called me saying that my permit was revoked. Quite a coincidence, isn't it, that my permit was revoked the same morning that he learned of my connection with the retired police? This led to my letter of complaint to the Commissioner of DOT, which you've seen, and their response, also indicating that the Harbor Master was not conducting his duties properly. At a recent Harbor Management Meeting, Mr. McMillan gave some excuse about the mooring being within 600 feet of an osprey nest, which we've talked about. And incidentally, one of the things I heard was that an osprey nest shall not be built within 600 feet of structures or whatever. I didn't hear anything about a mooring not be, first of all, being put there. And secondly, that mooring has been in that same location for 40 years. That's a lot longer than this newly placed osprey nest has been. And most important in this whole conversation, he'd already approved it. He approved the mooring. He took it away the next day, but he'd approved it. So what happens all of a sudden, when, all of a sudden after he'd approved it and he'd had the information for at least a month to change his mind in that period of time? Well, I think I've explained that. He further claims of the shallow issue. If you look at it, look at a chart, any Coast Guard, any US chart, you'll see that where this mooring is located shows nine feet of water and that's a low tide. Now, given that over the years that maybe have silted in a little bit, let's, just for the sake of example, say it's silted in two feet. That would leave seven feet, seven feet left. My boat draws two feet, that's five feet extra. So, you know, I don't know where he gets his figures and I'd be very happy to take anybody out that wants to see it and show them exactly where the mooring is and let them see the depth. That just doesn't hold water, so to speak. He further claims that he contacted me with an alternative mooring location, which is a lie. It's also quite a coincidence that last Saturday, last Saturday, my mooring marker was mysteriously moved about 100 yards from my mooring location. So here we are, almost two months after the town has cashed my mooring permit check, I am still deprived of use of my property because of a vindictive Harbor Master. I'm not here to ask for a new auditorium or pool. I just want my mooring back. Thank you.
Great. Are there any questions you have for Mr. Zobeck?
No.
Mr. McMillan, did you want to comment since? And could you introduce your guest? I know who he is, but the listening audience does not, and perhaps you can identify what his purpose is in the presentation today.
My name's Ian McMillan. I'm the Harbor Master. This is Mike Finkbinder. He's a licensed surveyor and he's been very helpful by allowing me to use his office to help portray issues seaward of the high watermark in charting formats. Yeah, let me first give you all a small kit. Predictable use is a term that was used earlier. And predictable use is why this is osprey versus osprey. Osprey is the name of Mr. Zobeck's boat. It's kind of ironic, but the problem is that there is an osprey nest there, there is a pole with a nest on top of it that was purchased by Robert Steinberg, who owns that property. He purchased that from the Trumps about 18 years ago, maybe 20. And Mr. Steinberg is in love with his osprey. And the predictable use that I'm talking about, that I think is considered unacceptable within 600 feet of an osprey nest, is...
Could you identify the date and time that photo was taken and who you believe the participants or who these people are?
Well, there's a mooring ball there with a boat named Flyaway, Peter Silverizen. And that, at that time was in the middle of a private channel and this was an activity that was making it very difficult for the residents of Winrose Way on Mead Point to access their docks because they'd have to, in low, in low water conditions, low tide, they'd have to negotiate getting past this.
Can you address sort of, it's sort of been an ongoing concern? I don't know if it's really been fully illuminated, but when this came up the last time, I don't think it was fully illuminated. And that is, do you continue to serve as the dock master for Winrose Way as you were?
I was never the dock master. I've been hired from time to time as a consultant.
Your resume that you submitted for the position stipulates on a dock master, Winway Rose Association, Mead Point, Greenwich.
Well, to the extent that they take care of it themselves, but they use me as a consultant.
I understand, but again, perceptions. The perception being that there's a conflict in your ability to adjudicate a decision on this. Are you enforcing your authorities under the statutes to deal with the mooring or are you responding to perhaps what could be perceived as special interests of certain individuals in Winrose Way?
I don't see how assigning a location in a more preferable location, at least in my perspective, is in any way involved with Winrose Way. That was an issue that it was related to navigation of a privately paid for, state-approved channel. That channel is not interrupted by this activity. This is a different issue altogether.
But the photo though reminds me of something I saw when that came up several years ago. That's why I asked you, what is the date of this photo?
That was done during the middle of the summer of 13. And at that time, we had asked him to move his mooring outside of the channel or adjacent to it and he, and he placed it there and eight hours later picked it up and put it right back in the middle of the channel. And all three selectmen at the time signed a letter.
What does that have to do with what's going on today, though?
I don't know. I mean, the only thing that I can say is today...
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand is what is, Mr. Zobeck, do you, where do you live in relationship to Winrose Way in that area? Where do you live in reference to Winrose Way and that channel?
Right there.
If you could show us.
Where that red dot is, is the Zobeck dock.
Right here. Here's the, here's the mooring out there. So it's a couple hundred yards.
Actually, it's 2,000 feet.
But Ian, like the first selectman, what does this picture with five boats right near each other have to do with anything with a osprey and what's going on? What's relevant about this picture? What's the connection here?
Well, when I looked at Mr. Zobeck's application and he was eager, very eager to get his mooring registered properly and applied for, I saw nothing wrong with it. And I told him I didn't see anything wrong with it and I thought that based on the information in his application, he could deploy, that all I had to do next, and he took it out of context, because what I did say was that what I had to do was a field check to make sure the equipment was insured, not insured, but inspected. And he signed and filled out this application. So after my discussion with him on the phone, I went out and did a field check and I found... I found that condition on a vendor who had called me up to tell me that he, is he allowed to deploy Mr. Silverizen's old float? And I...
Ian, come on, answer the question. What is up to this picture that you just gave us today, though?
That float is in the middle of that picture. It's a unique float. There's no other float like it in town.
It's like we're a jury here. It's like, you know.
Well, you asked for it.
I don't see the connection, but...
Well, the connection is that that particular float is what he claimed is his and that he wanted to deploy within 120 feet of an osprey nest. And the activities at that float have been documented as being a high use and rafting parties. And a rafting party is fine, but not that close to an active osprey nest.
You've lost me about the rafting party. This is about his request to maintain a mooring he says he's had for 40 years. The connection that I see, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that he's asking or he's purchasing the former policeman's tackle or, right. So I got, is that correct or not correct? Just help me get to the point.
He's claiming that he purchased the policeman's tackle. He signed an agreement that he would post a buoy that conformed to state law, which is underlined in red, a round buoy with a blue horizontal stripe in the middle of it, not all the literature of DOT approved and so forth that we objected to two, three years ago. My point is this.
Yeah, what is it?
There are several issues here. That's the 600-foot circle around the osprey nest, which is on a pole and is maintained. And at this area up in here, it's two feet deep at low tide. I went out and checked with the Harbor Master's boat. There is a cliff due to sort of a glacier of mud that's moving in the southwest direction that Mr. Zobeck would, if he was just up on a boat alone on his mooring, he'd have his stern in two feet of water in a southwest breeze at low tide. The area that I put him in is just to the north of Tweed Island in deeper water and well outside of the 600-foot circle. I don't see a problem. I don't know why he won't accept that. It's one of the best locations in town. It's protected by Tweed Island and it's, it's, it's 1,000 feet more, which is 3,000 feet from his dock, but it's certainly in a protected area. And if he wants to have his friends, including Peter Silverizen, tie up to it and host a rafting party as portrayed in what we can expect, a predictable use of that mooring, that's fine with me in that location because it's no longer a nuisance. Now, something else that I've learned because...
How far are the two from each other?
Mr. Zobeck's dock is here. The proposed location is 2,000 feet away from Mr. Zobeck's home. This is another 1,000 feet away, so it's 3,000 feet, a little bit more than half a mile.
So the osprey issue, like... The osprey issue, I think Ms. Savage, you addressed very appropriately with great acumen and knowledge. So in terms of valuing that, I'm going to, as I said, I take her at her word and acknowledge. So that, to me, is not a consideration. She's adjudicated that.
And I agree with that, provided that it's just a boat on a mooring, used occasionally, and in this case, it's a part-time mooring. It's not a full-time.
So we agree.
Yeah.
Then you get into more of the judgments, which there seems to be two in terms of the depth of the water, the tackle and all that, which is almost another issue that wasn't part of the initial issue submitted to us. But if that's a requirement, I'm sure Mr. Zobeck would adhere to it. But I still have the perceptual issue, Ian. And again, I, we didn't really take it head on last time, but I think we should this time.
Sure.
Don't you see appearance of conflict of interest that you're trying to move people, like recreational boaters, who do have their right, from what I understand, to enjoy the open waters?
Of course.
From an area of very nice homes occupied by some very nice people whom you've done work for in the past? It seems to me like, it's like, gee, you know, Ian, now that you're Harbor Master, get them away from, we don't want the noise, we don't want the party. How often does this occur? I mean, I don't know. Does it happen every weekend? Does it happen four times during the boating season?
It... It happens. It, it happens every weekend. And I'm not preventing the activity. They have a right. A privilege is, a mooring is a privilege. But to anchor is a right. And there's nothing we can do, that I understand, unless it's police action based on nuisance, to prevent somebody from anchoring right off somebody else's property.
Yeah.
And so I, and that's what they do.
I think the only person that would, we would benefit from having here to sort of have a, was it 2013 redo, is Ms. Burke. Because Ms. Burke was very emphatic about not wanting that activity.
I spoke with Ms. Burke. She has no objection to having moorings in this area. There are two. There is one about here and one about there. But it's only two. And if it was up to me, I'd remove both of those, not because of Winrose Way, but because of a request from Jan Hansen from Hansen Marine. And that's because he has to get a crane and a tugboat up in there to work on the different docks that are in that harbor. And he's had, he's had requests since, prior to the Silverizen incident, where he wanted to have all of the moorings in this pinched channel here removed, including the two that are left. Now, we removed almost all of those moorings, except for those two, and we placed them in this area here. And no complaints. In fact, people are very grateful that they still have their moorings. Mr. Zubek, however, I don't think has ever had a mooring permit. I think that his, his presumption that because he's had a mooring for 60 years, or 45, or whatever the time was, that we're supposed to believe that he's been maintaining it lawfully in the town. We did an extensive search and couldn't find any record of Mr. Zubek's moorings. So he's never registered them. The man's a scofflaw. And I, I think it's important to put into context that he may have stated in his letter that he issued a check in the middle of May, when it was May 26th. If you look on the record there, you'll find out.
Has Mr. Zubek, has he been paying for a mooring for how many years?
Only one, this year.
Prior to this year?
Never. Never registered. There's no prior history of being him in that location that's documented. This is osprey versus osprey, but it's much more than that. Once you get into the actual area here, you find out that the northernmost of the two moorings has a circle that's 60 feet in diameter. There's a problem there because Mr. Zubek is impinging upon that circle as well. And so he's, he's interlocked with somebody else's mooring at the location he's proposing, and he's claiming he's had it for many, many years. No permits. No permission. No, nothing. If Mr. Zubek can produce a past history of any permits, I would welcome it. But that doesn't change the fact that we've got a glacier of mud moving into that area that's going to make it impossible at low tide at some point. And we did provide him with a logical alternative away from the disturbance, a possible disturbance. And let me say, I'm not saying that Mr. Zubek is going to disturb the birds. I'm saying that the expected or predictable use of that particular mooring by somebody who's obviously a close friend of his will result in disturbing human activity that may drive the female out of the nest, which is what we're afraid of. And she won't come back if she's that disturbed.
Yeah. What I'll do, I mean, I'll leave that to Denise to adjudicate.
And I will, too.
Yeah, because that's her expertise. But I do think you've made several points that Mr. Zubek should be given an opportunity to address if he so chooses. Do you, do you choose to comment, Chuck, on any of the...
All right. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you, Ian.
I do have one more comment to make, and this refers to jurisdiction. The, each harbor may station all vessels riding at anchor in the harbor and navigable waterways under his care. And all vessels or obstructions so moored or anchored that by the action of wind or tide, they may carry it into such harbor navigable waterways while so moored or anchored. And he may remove from time to time such vessels within such harbor and navigable waterways, or such vessels or obstructions so moored or anchored as are not employed in receiving or discharging your cargoes, or to make room for the passage of larger vessels up or down the harbor and navigable waterways. He shall be the sole judge of whether any vessel so at anchor is so in the harbor or navigable waterways as to obstruct or hinder the passage of any other vessel. This isn't obstructing another vessel from passing, from what I can tell. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, again, the letter from Mr. Salvatore dated June 30th has the paragraph that, again, references the special acts that Ms. Ahmad had noted, 93 and 238. It again reaffirms, up until such time as the town adopts a harbor management plan, that the selectmen shall have the authority to regulate the anchoring and mooring of all vessels, boats and craft, and to designate those places or mooring grounds, and make such other reasonable rules, regulations or orders respecting use of said waters by all vessels, boats and crafts. So...
There's two comments I need to make on that.
Well, no, but just, it's pretty much black and white. I'm not an attorney.
Well, it's not black and white because he's the dredge coordinator. He's not a manager.
He is the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, whether you like it or not.
And he doesn't know anything.
Well, then, again, who are we going to rely upon?
He doesn't know.
I have to rely on him.
You work for them. You're appointed by them. I, in fact, just so you know, and it's all publicly disclosed, when this issue was first presented to me by Mr. Zubek, I said, you're their responsibility, therefore go to them.
He never wrote me. He never kept me in the loop. I didn't know that Mr. Zubek...
Because, you know, we, we've had this discussion, too. Has the Attorney General ruled on this? Because if we do override this and we say, put the thing in over this, has, has Jepson...
The state's telling us to do it. I mean, the state is saying...
Well, I disagree.
Well, I don't know. They put their pen to paper. They're an official of the state. We're not going to get into, the state is the state. This is their representative, as are you. They oversee what you do. So that's why we're here. Frankly...
If they oversee what I do, why didn't Mr. Salvatore contact me before he had come?
Got to ask him.
He did. And he apologized. He said this one...
If I go back, has, has the Attorney General ruled on this part of it? Again, I know you were going to call him last year.
I did.
And?
I did. He said that he didn't feel the Board of Selectmen had the authority to override a statute of the state, and that they would have to comply with the statutes of the state. And I just read to you a statute of the state.
Ian, with all due respect, you're being disingenuous. They're very clear here. We had Mr. Porenuski down here. We're going to get a harbor management plan with everybody's cooperation, and then you'll rule supreme and you'll be a happy man. But until then, we'll respect the charter that so many people in this room and outside still wish to adhere to in terms of protection of special acts. And therefore, that's why we're here. Believe me, we could be taking up other items. This is an item that is rightfully under our purview per our legal department and the State of Connecticut. So what we choose to do with it is a whole nother issue. But in terms of jurisdiction...
Well, I'll send you the correspondence that I had from the governor's office depicting the, yeah.
Ms. Ahmad can speak to it. She has files.
Good. Okay.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, I'm going to, if you could just summarize, I mean, we spent considerable time, and...
I don't want to cut Mr. Zubek off. I know he had some comments to make, but, and we'll hear from him. But I do think it's important, in terms of how you decide this issue, is to make a determination as to what the proposed use of this mooring will be. And I'm sure Mr. Zubek will speak to that. Because based on my discussions with the DEP wildlife official, they wanted us to get back to them, and Denise and I can do that together, is to get back to them and, and let them know what we hear today from Mr. Zubek, as well as from the harbor master, in terms of the expected use of this mooring. As you just heard, there are two other moorings there, the residential moorings. But, but what the DEP wildlife officials are interested in is, is, is the use of this mooring going to be similar to the use of the other two moorings that are out there, what they call predictable use? So I think if we hear from Mr. Zubek as to what the proposed use of this mooring will be, you'll need that information to make a determination. And for us to go back to the DEP also and get yet another recommendation from them together with Denise Savage.
But isn't that hard, though, to do for this board when we have the harbor master saying that there's a safety or depth issue, and then you have Mr. Zubek saying there's not? How does this board determine whether or not, put aside the birds, put aside Ian, put aside, you know, whatever? If the harbor master is saying, I denied his application because, not a bird thing, but a depth thing or something else, how, how does this board make the determination who's, who's right here?
Right. And that's a good point. I think Mr. Zubek is disagreeing with Mr. McMillan's evaluation of the depth of that area. So if that, if that were the only reason for which this mooring was being denied, or if it's one of the reasons that's being denied, you and I are not the experts on what is the depth at low tide.
But wouldn't, wouldn't it be a matter of, in a sense, common sense, that if it's a depth issue, no one's going to want to bring their vessel in there and risk damage to it? I mean, to me, it seems rather a practical answer to it is, it would be nonusable. It'd be like trying to bring something into the mill pond in low tide. I mean, you know, there's no water there in certain parts. You're not going to do it.
Right. And I think you heard from Mr. McMillan, this is not an issue of safety of the, of the navigable waterway there. It's not an obstruction issue.
It's not a bird issue.
And maybe not a bird issue, depending on what you hear. So, so that statute Mr. McMillan read from really doesn't come into play here, and I think he acknowledged that as much. So it's not a safety and navigation issue. It, it does seem to be somewhat of a depth issue, but again, you and I are not the experts on that. I think we have to go with maybe, as the first selectman suggested, maybe a common sense approach. But, but there are various issues at play here. And I think once we hear from Mr. Zubek, we can certainly go back to the DEP before you make any final determination.
But there's, it's more than a common sense issue. If we override the harbor master, independent of what we feel about Ian or not, what we're saying is, we don't think he knows what the hell he's doing, basically.
No, we're saying that we respect the special acts that give us the authority in our judgment.
Based on, the judgments based on what we think that it's a, it's a depth issue...
Happens all the time with governing bodies overturning, you, very, very articulate in saying when the BET overturns my request for firefighter funding, that they should trust me and my, and they don't. They do their thing. So this is, this is no different. It's governing bodies with authority...
True. But to me, this is not based on a trust issue. Either there's a depth issue or is not. I, this is the point. This is something that's quantifiably verified.
Use was the big issue, I think, that Mr. Zubek, you need to tell us.
I think use is really the big issue.
What you, what you anticipate the use to be, we need to really hear from you directly going forward if that mooring were to be, but I think we need to hear from you before Mr. McMillan.
All right. I just wanted to correct the statement because this is something I learned yesterday, and that is that Mr. Wisner's mooring, which has been there for quite a number of years, is very near where Mr. Zubek's proposed location is. And when I was listening to Ahmaud talk about that this is not an issue of navigation, it occurred to me that it could be an issue of navigation if those boats are on top of each other with their mooring arrangements. And that's easy to confirm. So, thank you.
To that point, usage. First of all, up until a year ago, I had a 38-foot sailboat that drew five and a half feet. That boat sat on that mooring for about 10 years. Now, isn't that interesting, that a boat that draws five and a half feet could be on a, on a mooring where there's only two feet at low tide? Something's wrong here. The use, the use of the mooring. I have a Grady White I keep at my dock, and safety would say that in any kind of storm or bad weather, that you want to get the boat off the dock. So it is, it is for that use. It is also, when the, we have an eight and a half foot tide range, as you know. And I cannot get into my dock, I can't get the Grady White into the dock, I can get a dinghy in, but I can't get the Grady White into the dock at low tide. So that's the other use, to be able to, to get in, to get back into my house from, from where, you know, from the mooring. One, one real problem I've got with Mr. McMillan has, has come up several times here, things he claims, he, he claimed that he got back to me with a, a proposal. I haven't seen an email. I haven't seen a letter. Same thing happened on the, on the mooring approval. He approved my mooring, and I said at the time on the phone when he did that, I said, could you send me an email confirming that? He said, no problem. Never arrived. So, you know, he makes, makes these claims, but there is no way to back them up. And you've already addressed the conflict of interest with Winrose Lane, incidentally. The docks that Hansen moves when he goes in there are the Burks, who, you know, it's a vicious circle.
But Mr. Zubek, why haven't, and I'm not saying you haven't have it, I don't know, but why haven't you filled out an application years prior? Why just last year, though? If you, if you've maintained this now for 40 years, and last year was the only time you filled out the application, what, what is, what's that about?
Up until a year or so ago, I didn't know there was a requirement to do that. First of all, okay? Secondly, and most important, all, all of that part about the mooring in the past is, it's interesting, but it's irrelevant. He okayed this mooring. He okayed it. And he claims that, well, afterwards, he had to go back and check the depth. He had my mooring application for at least a month before he approved it. Now, he had plenty of time to do his due diligence, but it turns out that the day after he makes the approval, then he goes and, and checks the depth, and he checks the osprey nest and says, sorry. It just doesn't make any sense.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Mr. Mazza, did you want to comment?
My name is Frank Mazza. I'm chairman of the Harbor Management Commission. We received Mr. Zubek's letter. We received the letter from the Department of Transportation. I passed it on to all our members and simply said, we know at this point, we can't act on this because we don't have a harbor management plan. And incidentally, we hopeful in the next two weeks, we're going to have a draft copy of the harbor management plan into you and into the Law Department for review. So we are starting to make some real progress on it now. But the main concern here is a couple of things. If the argument is that you don't put a mooring in because you have an osprey nest, what do we do in Greenwich Cove? There are probably, I don't know the exact amount, but 75 to 100 moorings within 600 feet of two osprey nests up in Greenwich Cove. You know, we can't have two standards. We have to have one standard for the town. By next year, we will have regulations. We will have new mooring regulations, which actually will not be in the harbor management plan, but will be done by ordinance that will have to go through your board, Law Department and your board. But it's a serious concern if we're using this kind of argument on this one mooring. How do you justify all the moorings up in Greenwich Cove that are close to the nests and people rafted up on those? I happen to know because I have one that's close to the nest, and I watch the ospreys all summer, and I have for years. So, you know, it's, it's a serious concern as far as the permitting is going, goes. We've been asking for a list of all the moorings that have been permitted in this town. And I think you remember last year when we had a freedom of information issue to try to get a list. And as far as we know, at this point, Mr. McMillan's in his fourth year as the harbor master, we haven't found one mooring that's been actually permitted. He uses a preliminary provisional mooring permit. But it's a concern. We're trying to get it out of base and get moorings permitted. And as far as we know, there's not been an actual permitting of a mooring, unless Mr. McMillan can come up and tell us that he has some. But it's an issue, and hopefully next year, we will be in charge and be able to correct it.
Yes. What would you like to say, Mr. Finkbeiner?
Thank you. My name is Michael Finkbeiner. I'm a licensed land surveyor. I've been working with the harbor master for a period of four years to attempt to accurately map, measure, map and record in a database the location of all of the moorings. When there are questionable issues regarding mooring applications, Ian has already indicated that he relies on my office. map, measure, map, and record in a database the location of all of the moorings. When there are questionable issues regarding mooring applications, Ian has already indicated that he relies on my office to resolve these issues. We had the matter of the Silver Rising mooring, and it's being moved in and out of the Windrose Way Channel. I performed a detailed study of the bathymetric contours, as well as the existing moorings, and I provided an accurate mooring location for the moorings that were there. There was, Ian has restated that there were conflict issues with regard to passage of vessels, and there are still those issues. And I want to point out that this mooring application made to Mr. Zubek requested a location at W 073.616.26. Now, you may not be mapping professionals, but if we're going to talk about latitude, it either has to be in degrees, or degrees and minutes, or degrees, minutes, and seconds. And this number is not understandable to me as a professional mapper. The, I'm sorry, that was the longitude. Likewise, the latitude was indicated as N 41.012.19. So again, we have a problem that if the Board of Selectmen is going to assume authority for the stationing of vessels, I believe you will be required to have accurate, precise, reproducible latitudes and longitudes. The equipment I used for this purpose cost me about $100,000. We're not using marine-grade GPS, although I accept those numbers and understand them if I can identify that the user knows whether he's talking about decimal degrees, or degrees and decimal minutes, or degrees, minutes, and decimal seconds. But there is enormous confusion in the records of the town and in the records of mooring applications as to these exact locations. So I hope that you, as a selectman, if you think that your special acts override General Statute 15-8 that says the harbor master shall have the, shall have the sole authority to station vessels, that you are prepared, along with the Harbor Commission, to make a serious investment in mapping and administration. Because my office and others that cooperate with Ian in this mapping effort have devoted, honestly, tens of thousands of dollars and thousands of hours to the effort. And, you know, we will be in court next Monday pursuing this issue of the special acts, the definition of the waters of Greenwich, who has authority to do what? I mean, this is all moving into the courts very rapidly. And by rapidly, I mean Monday.
I just have a question for you. You mentioned the database, and we just heard from Mr. Mazza that they have not received a database. So I guess the question I have for you, are you maintaining a database of all the town moorings?
No, the harbor master maintains the database. I assist in the mapping of that database.
The question remains, another sort of bugaboo that's been out there for two years. Let's just pull the scab off the wound.
Sure, that's what I'm here for.
Do you have the band, do you have the database on your proprietary systems of all the moorings as the applications have come in? Because that's been raised, and we should know, because it's really public information.
No, I map the existing findings of where these moorings are. The overwhelming problem is that when Mr. McMillan started, even though the selectmen had been responsible for anchoring of vessels, there was no accurate knowledge of where those moorings are, and they do change from month to month, and certainly from season to season. So I'm simply here to say that at the time of the Silver Rising issue, I did a very detailed survey of this area, and I cannot interpret this application to know exactly where the proposed location is. But I've given you a map where we think the requested location was based on Ian's field survey, and then the alternate location that Ian has provided. And I am just here to say that if you'd like to be the adjudicators of these issues, I think you will need to have a, you know, a very well-developed charting, mapping, and regulatory system to keep track of this. And I have testified previously in the public hearing at which we were present, that a ship needs just one captain, and a harbor needs just one master. And that's the way the state law is written, and I hope you will appreciate. And certainly, there will be a judge telling us soon enough that when state law says, the harbor master shall be the sole authority to station vessels, that's what state law means, and that's what we'll control. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that will be determined, I guess, by another body, but we know what the state has told us. We know what our legal team has told us. We know what the Attorney General told us. So there's no point in going around and around. It's, the reality is, we have special acts, and until those acts are changed, removed, in this case, if, once we adopt a harbor management plan, the act ceases to function in the way they are now. I mean, it's going to have to work through the commission, not the Board of Selectmen.
Right, so when there's a harbor management plan, then the plan really takes control of exactly what happens on a day-to-day basis within the harbors, but the special acts still remain. And if you recall, the ordinance is written in such a way so as to keep the authority under the special acts intact as well. So I think they would work in conjunction.
Through the commission, though. The commission has, my point is, the commission has standing, whereas now it doesn't until such time as the plan is adopted.
Yes, so it's the commission who will manage the day-to-day operations of the harbors based on a harbor management plan that they've approved. But if there are any issues beyond them, then you, as the Board of Selectmen, the way, the way the ordinance is written, would still have authority to address issues having to do with the harbors under the special act.
Unless the acts are removed by the state. I mean, we can't, the special acts are...
Right, right, for as long as they exist, correct.
Okay, thank you.
So.
So I don't think we're taking any action today?
Right, so I think, and Denise is still here, we will circle back to the Wildlife Officials at DEP on the Osprey issue, because they did want to hear back from us as to, you know, what is the anticipated use of this mooring, and get back to you on that issue.
And also on the use of the, yeah, use of the mooring, Mr. Zubek was going to come back. And then to the point, the latter point that Mr. Finkbiner made in terms of getting accurate Latin lawn for the specified area.
I mean, obviously, Mr. Finkbiner has been able to plot a location on the map. I do have a question, though. I've seen a version of the map that shows a 240-foot distance, and this one shows 150-foot distance. I want to be sure when we go back to the DEP, we can tell them exactly what the distance is between the Osprey nest or the Osprey platform and the proposed location of the mooring. So it's 115 or 240?
If I may explain, we tried to get some of this done over the phone, and I gave a preliminary plan to Ian, and he said, no. And I went out in my boat, I was closer to the Osprey pole than 240 feet. I was closer to 120 feet. And therefore, this morning, we corrected the proposal, but I still don't have from the Zubek application a, what I would call a nailed-down, confirmed latitude and longitude. It would be much easier to proceed with this adjudication if we could come to an agreement as to exactly where the two alternative locations are. And I can only speak for...
We agree. That's, we agree.
One more thing. I know Mr. McMillan has an alternative location for the mooring for Mr. Zubek, and at some point, if, for whatever reason, the proposed location does not materialize, I suppose the question needs to be asked, is there any objection on the part of Mr. Zubek to the alternate location that's being proposed near the island?
So you'll communicate for the parties, correct?
Sure.
Yeah, yes. Oh, sure.
First of all, the latitude, the longitude. I looked at the application, and it's simply a misprint, which is very easily remedied. Second, I'm sorry, what was the question?
You had said you weren't told about the alternate.
Oh, the alternate, the alternate location, which I was supposedly shown, which to this day, I don't know where it is. But if it's out off of Tweed Island, it is not acceptable for two reasons. Number one, Mr. McMillan says that it's not, it's particularly protected there. Mr. McMillan has not been there, obviously, when the wind is blowing out of the south at the east, because at Tweed Island, there's a cut there that comes through, and there can be a nasty sea coming through there. And secondly, where I am now, I can see the boat from my house, which is a safety factor, which is a security factor, so.
So ultimately, then, Ahmadi, so ultimately, if I'm hearing correctly, then if he's not willing to accept that alternate, whatever, this, at some point, if Ian, if the harbor master is denying him of the mooring for various reasons, whatever, doesn't want to accept whatever, ultimately, this board is going to have to...
Decide.
Decide, correct? Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Yes, and I think to the extent you keep in mind, as long as it's not a navigation issue, safety of the harbor issue, the harbor master advises you on those issues.
There is any further comment on that item? Item number six is appointments and nominations. Are there any of those today?
No.
No? Okay. There's executive session, no matters. The next meeting, as was noted, is to be held on August 6 at 10:00 a.m. And no further business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
There is.